Welcome, 9:03 a.m. Today is Tuesday, June 15th. This is the regular meeting for the County Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake. And we are going to start with a moment of silence. Is there a moment of silence from anyone? So I know that today is June 15th. I will, we will have a conversation later on about the limbo situation we are in for COVID-19. But I do know that this lifts all the restrictions for our businesses today. And so I just want to think about our businesses that have struggled through this last year and three months. Lots of hardships, lots of changes, lots of emotions. And so if we could just take a moment of silence for all of our businesses that have kept strong throughout this entire ordeal. Supervisor Scott, would you please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Supervisor. Are there any extra items from board members or staff for today's meeting? Seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that board members wish to pull from the consent agenda? So I wanted to pull mainly because we just received as of yesterday afternoon, 5.14. Want to make sure and just read the letter that we will be approving. And then also have the opportunity for any potential updates about the Middle Creek project. And so that is the item I wish to pull. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Anyone from the public wish to pull an item? And seeing none, I am trying to join in the Zoom session. Can anyone let me know if there's a hand up in the Zoom session?
No hands up.
Perfect, thank you so much. So if we can bring it back to the board for actions on 5.1 through 5.13.
Mr. Chair, would like to move to approve consent agenda items number 5.1 through 5.13.
Second?
Motion by Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
And we'll go ahead and get to that item later. It's 9:06 a.m., so let's go ahead and move on with our timed items. Our 9:05 a.m. is public input. Any public input from members in the chambers? Seeing none, any public input from members in the Zoom room? And I have it open, so I'm able to see. And I do not see any hands up at this moment in time. So let's go ahead and close public input for this meeting. And we'll move on to item 6.2. Our presentation of proclamation designated the month of June 2021 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month. And I will go ahead and just read it from here. Proclamation designated the month of June 2021 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month. Whereas, our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people. But the fulfillment of this promise has been long in coming for many Americans. Some of the most inspiring moments in our history have arisen from the various civil rights movements that have brought one group after another from the margins to the mainstream of American society. And whereas, in the movement towards equal rights for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender LGBTQ+ people, a historic turning point occurred on June 28, 1969, in New York City with the onset of the Stonewall riots. During these riots, LGBTQ+ citizens rose up and resisted police harassment that arose out of discriminatory criminal laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. In the four decades since, civil rights for LGBTQ+ people have grown substantially, and LGBTQ+ pride celebrations have taken place around the country every June to commemorate the beginning of the Stonewall riots. And whereas, California has been a leader in advancing the civil rights of its LGBTQ+ citizens. And while further progress is needed, it is important to recognize and celebrate the substantial gains that have been achieved. And whereas, LGBTQ+ residents in Lake County represent our families, our friends, our neighbors, our teachers, our employees, and our community leaders. Across all religions, races, and communities, there are LGBTQ+ people helping our nation to become a more perfect union and reaching our ideals proclaimed in our Declaration of Independence that all people are created equal and therefore deserve to be embraced and treated as equals. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby proclaim June 2021 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Lake County and calls upon its residents to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists and celebrate the diversity of our community. Passed and adopted this 15th day of June 2021. And I believe, from what I gathered from staff, that this is the first time that we have done an LGBTQ+ Pride proclamation. And I hope this is the first of an annual custom that we get ourselves into. I think it's important to celebrate the positive changes that we've had in our country, in our state, and in our communities. And so I'm happy to make that change for us this time. And thank you to staff. I also have a pride flag to put on our dais for the month of June. Any comments or questions before we move on? Please.
I appreciate you bringing this. And I also hope this is the first, we don't miss it. We keep going with this proclamation every year. And I would like to see... I love the little flag, I think it's a great gesture. But I would like us to get a big flag on the outside of the building next year.
And we're going to pause the conversation before we continue when people miss out. There seems to be some technical difficulties. So let's go ahead and take a... Sam, five minutes? Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break. We'll be back in 9:16.
Chair Sabatier, we're having a software issue, so it looks like we won't have Granicus for this meeting.
Yep.
But we are ready to continue when you are.
Okay. We'll go ahead and wait till everyone is seated and ready to go.
Jake, are you ready on that end then? On your end?
Did we get an okay from Jake, Sam?
Not yet, we are. Okay, so Jake, we're going to go ahead and continue with the meeting only. We'll have to do something with Granicus and upload it later. Are you okay with that?
Yes, yeah, yeah, sorry, sounds good.
Okay.
Okay.
And Johanna, you're ready? Not with Granicus, but you're ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay. So just real quick announcement. We seem to have some technological issues here with our Granicus. So if you are watching, if you were watching the meeting and you can't seem to find it, hopefully you found another way to hear this, or else this is a moot point. But you can still join Zoom. That link would be found on our agenda, which can be found on our website. Or you can watch us live on Facebook. We will no longer be live on Granicus, but we will upload the video once this is completed, as we are still recording. And we'll be able to upload that later today. Again, if you are in the Zoom room, you are able to provide public input. And if you want to raise your hand, click the button at the bottom of your screen, or else dial star nine if you are here via telephone. And with that, let's go ahead and move on. I do see a hand from our CAO Hutchinson, which I am wondering if that's a test.
That was in the past, so sorry.
I was just tested. Okay, so we are moving on. We were actually in the midst of a conversation. And I want to put, bring it back to Supervisor Pisca, who was asking about a potential placement of a flag. And I just wanted to say that there are policies on flags. There are policies also on lowering the flag. And so I think that we need to bring those back before making any decisions of what to add, so that we make sure that we have the rules done correctly, rather than just what we feel for the day would be appropriate. That way, we make sure that inappropriate things do not get requested to us.
And I appreciate that, and we have a year to get that right.
Absolutely. Any further comment from anyone? Yes, Supervisor Scott?
Just I definitely agree with Supervisor Pisca. We need to be looking at that and seeing what we need to do to change our rules to be able to see if we can fly that flag next year. As you pointed out, a lot of progress has been made, but more work needs to be done. And I appreciate you and thank you for bringing this forward today.
Yep. And I like the shirt. It reminds me of the Tour de France that you get. If you're the best climber on the mountain, you get the rainbow shirt too. Any further comments from any board members before we move on? Please Supervisor Simon.
You know, obviously, I agree with the rest of the board. All inclusiveness here in Lake County. That's where we're going towards, you know, obviously, understanding people's cultures. You know, everything about everybody, you know. So individuality is something needs to be celebrated and always brought, you know, and supported. So thank you very much. I greatly appreciate you bringing this. And just one more step forward for the folks here in Lake County and the board, being all inclusive for all of our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, I think this is a great thing. And really glad we did it, because I believe in respecting all human beings and giving reciprocation, so.
Thank you. Since we went around and had a conversation, just want to quickly open it up for the public. Any comments on this pride proclamation? And seeing none in the boardroom and none in the Zoom room, we'll go ahead and bring it back. And we're going to move on to item 6.3, 9:45 a.m. Oops, nope, we're not 9:45. So we're going to move on to 7.2. Discussion consideration of masking and social distancing requirements given the difference guidance from CDC, CDPH, and Cal OSHA and future amendment to the County of Lake COVID-19 Public Health Emergency Work Site Protocol. CAO Hutchinson.
Just a moment, Mr. Chair. So thank you. As I'm sure you have heard, it's been all over the news. There's a distinct conflict between the Cal OSHA guidance for employees in our workplaces and the governor's guidance and the guidance of CDC and CDPH. And so as a result of that conflict, we have had to advise Lake County employees. In fact, we sent out an email blast to everyone yesterday to advise that we need to continue to mask at this time, although the public is not required to mask. And so we are hoping that this conflict will be resolved on Thursday. We understand that is the date that Cal OSHA meets again. There is pressure on them, I understand, to resolve this conflict. And so that's where we stand right now. We had hoped to bring forward a revision to the COVID protocol to address the situation. In fact, Pam, who's here with us and will probably add to this discussion, had written it. And then we had to pull it back because of the changing information coming out of Cal OSHA. So Pam?
Good morning, Board. Yes, we're hoping that they're going to vote on the new information on Thursday. The governor is asking them to make it effective Thursday, rather than the 10-day waiting period. So we're hoping to get new information. And we will update the protocol once again and get it out right away. If they make it effective Thursday, we'll get an email blast out to our employees to let them know what this new information is. And then we'll update the protocol for Tuesday's agenda and bring it back to you.
So what we would be doing between now and the 22nd, when you meet again, is if you agree, if you concur, then we would advise staff that we're allowing an exception to the COVID protocol in light of the newly released guidance, which we hope we will have Thursday, and then amend the protocol officially by your board on the 22nd.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Supervisor Simon?
Just my question on that, wouldn't we amend? So if they make the decision on Thursday, and it's different from the protocol, we would just implement what it is, or we're waiting all the way until Tuesday? That's my question.
We would go ahead and implement, we would allow an exception to the protocol as written, pending your approval of the amended protocol.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't want to make people wait any longer.
It would be officially approved on Tuesday, but begun after the 17th.
Okay, so we just ratify the changes on Tuesday?
If there's consensus from you all that that's how you want us to proceed, we don't see a reason to make county employees wait until Tuesday.
Any further questions or comments? So I just want to, this is specifically about employees, what's in front of us today. But I do want to ask, since there's employee interaction, is it as of today that we are using the honor system of basically, if you are vaccinated, you do not need to wear a mask? If you are not vaccinated, we ask you to please wear a mask? Is that starting as of today? Or is there still a waiting period with Cal OSHA, since there is interaction with employees?
With the public, it is the honor system, starting today.
Okay. And so when I walked in, I saw that we still have all of our same guidance, place a face mask. Are we going to be updating those? Are we going to be taking those off?
We need to get out and take those down off of doors.
Okay, okay. And then for our meeting as well, it will be the same thing, since the public is in here. It would be the honor system. And since we're employees, we are, we have to abide by Cal OSHA laws. And so after the 17th, on the 22nd, if everything has already been approved, but not yet officially approved by us, we can come in here without a mask if we are vaccinated.
That is our understanding, yes.
Okay.
We were, you know, in an earlier round of this last week, Pam had drafted an amendment to the COVID protocol for employees that included a form that employees would complete indicating what their vaccination status was, is. But until we have further guidance from Cal OSHA, I'm not sure we know for sure if we would roll out the amendment with that requirement. Pam, is there any update on that piece specifically?
No, not yet. And it'll also depend on whether they approve it as of Thursday, or we have to wait the 10-day waiting period. So like, we should know Thursday evening what direction they're going in and whether or not that requirement is even going to still be applicable. So there, what I'm hearing and reading is that they're leaning towards OSHA making their policy consistent with the CDC and the California Department of Health. So... But you just never can tell with OSHA. We'll have to kind of wait and see what guidance we get on Thursday.
So in the interim, we appreciate Lake County employees continuing to comply with the rules. We know it's a frustrating situation when masks are not required for the public, but are still required for employees. But that's the way it stands at this time.
Yeah, I will share just a little bit of frustration that this has been two months in the making. And this is where bureaucracy becomes absolutely frustrating, where over the course of two months, we can't get to the same day. And it just seems, it seems deceptive to keep using a date that now does not actually equal exactly what we've been waiting for. Granted, the public is impacted in a different way. But Cal OSHA does reach into the majority of our businesses. And so all of our businesses are having to make a decision today. And it's a very unfortunate situation that we have to wait for this. And I would suggest that, yes, there's the potential for anything that could happen that may be on Thursday. They do not make a decision on this. But I would suggest that with Governor Newsom's pressure that he is currently under, that that will most likely happen on the 17th, no matter what. Hence why he was wanting to do an executive order to help push this along as well, because he's under a lot of pressure to make these things happen. So I would suggest that we don't just give consensus. I think we should give a motion to state that we want to approve the changes as long as Cal OSHA makes those changes themselves. I feel very comfortable, more comfortable with a motion than just a consensus. And so I see a nod coming from our county council. And so let's go ahead and open it up for the public, haven't done that yet. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this item? And again, this is only for employee protocol for COVID-19. I see a hand, and Elizabeth Arnold.
Hi, this is Elizabeth, can you guys hear me?
Yes, if you can maybe speak a little bit louder.
Okay, this is Elizabeth Arnold. I am the LTA president.
Okay.
I have actually had a few employees worried about the non-masking and non-social distancing in county buildings. So if we, if you guys decide to do that, so if OSHA decides on Thursday not to do the masking and the social distancing anymore, so is that going to be implemented on Thursday? That there will be none in county buildings?
That is exactly what we are talking about. That if Cal OSHA makes the anticipated changes based on their proposed language, that we would be potentially approving that today to go ahead and join and change our protocol based on those changes at Cal OSHA. And then on Tuesday, we would come back to officially ratify that document to make those changes.
So it wouldn't be official till Tuesday?
It would, it would be unofficial as of Friday, if things are signed on Thursday, and official as of Tuesday, as far as just documentation-wise. It would be unofficial, because we would be approving today if that is the decision of the board to go ahead and join that protocol offered by Cal OSHA.
Okay, so I have concerns for some of our employees and employees who have concerns for themselves, obviously. I've had several employees who have their own concerns about that. I know there are several who aren't vaccinated yet and who don't intend to be vaccinated. Is it possible to wait till Tuesday to do, to give our employees some time to think about if they want to decide to be vaccinated or not, if Cal OSHA decides to change their mind?
And I would say that since no decision has been made yet by this board, that anything is possible, but it all depends on what that decision is once we finish this item.
Mr. Chair, if I could add to, employees have, can certainly continue to wear masks as long as they feel the need to do so. And I, you know, for my own self, I do envision continuing to wear a mask in my own department. I plan to leave some of the shielding in place where we have the most, you know, frequent public comment, excuse me, contact. So departments can certainly keep precautions in place, and employees can continue to mask and socially distance.
Thank you for that.
Also, unvaccinated people would still have to wear their mask. Everything that I've seen, that's the way Cal OSHA is going to rule. And that is consistent with what is on the CDC website, is that unvaccinated people must still continue to mask. And my, also, my recommendation would be is that we keep up all the physical barriers for public-facing customer service.
Are we also going to be doing the masking for our employees?
I'm going to interrupt real quick. Elizabeth Arnold, if you can go ahead and finish up your public comment, and that way we can go ahead and respond and we can move on.
My other comment, my other question was, for employees who come to work ill, are they going to be made to wear masks if they're coughing or anything like that?
Employees that, employees that are symptomatic should not come to work.
Okay.
So if you can please be patient with us, we'll get the amended protocol and draft form out for everybody to look at. But, but no, we don't envision people who are symptomatic coming into the workplace at all.
And also, I will just add that the vaccination is widely available and can, probably somebody can get their first shot today if they wanted to. There's some walk-ins that are available. And all around the county, there's clinics that are offering the vaccination. So if, if you have staff that are worried and wish to get vaccinated, then that would be one way. And if they're worried and they want to keep wearing a mask, that's another way as well. There's nothing to stop people from protecting themselves. And again, no decision has been made yet, but we'll see, we'll see where we go. Let's go ahead and go to the next, yes, sorry Supervisor Scott.
Just want to comment on that. She made the comment about having us wait till Tuesday, you know, so people can think about getting vaccinated. But they still, even if they, you know, decided to get vaccinated on Friday, they still wouldn't be fully vaccinated on Tuesday anyway, because you still need at least two weeks after your second shot, or two weeks after if you do the Johnson &amp; Johnson. So there's still going to be a time lapse there.
Thank you for that. Next comment is Will Tuttle.
Yes, thank you. So just regarding this, I want to say that in the background of all this is this idea of requiring a vaccine.
So I'm going to stop you right there. There is absolutely no requirement of vaccination at all. So let's stay on the topic. This is about employee protocol for COVID-19 guidelines. And there is absolutely zero wordage that says mandated vaccination.
Right, okay. But regardless, there's, there's pressure for people. If they don't want to wear a mask, for example, they have to be vaccinated. And I was just reading yesterday, a mother and father were talking about their 18-year-old son who had gone in to be vaccinated, and 24 hours later was dead. And they called the clinic and they said, you know, about it. And the clinic said it was just a coincidence that he died. He was totally healthy. I heard Dr. Peter McCullough last night, one of the most prestigious people, said there's now over 800 young people have died from this vaccine. And I think that it's incumbent upon the board and all these, and all officials in Lake County to question the official narrative that keeps rolling out something that is shown to be deadly.
And again, just to interrupt again, this is about employee protocol on COVID-19. We're not talking to force people or make people vaccinate. We are talking about how we're going to go ahead and continue and ensure the safety of our employees as we move forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comments? Boardroom, Zoom room? And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back for either further discussion or action from the board.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to express my appreciation to Ms. Arnold for raising her excellent questions as the president of our largest labor group. We understand how confusing this is, and we're going to get it straightened out just as soon as we possibly can. We want Lake County employees to be safe.
And the number one way to be safe is to continue all the health protocols that we have put into place. Make sure you wash your hands. You, as an individual, can go ahead and keep practicing social distancing, where you are in a defensive way, making sure that you stay with certain separations between you and yourself, you and yourself, you and your colleagues, you and the public. You can keep masking. There's lots of things that can be done to ensure a higher level of safety. And of course, there is also the possibility of you getting vaccinated, and that those are all available as well. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, just want to let, you know, our employees know that obviously, completely support the opportunity for them to make their own individual decisions on their safety, the masking. Obviously, there'll be certain circumstances that, you know, you really feel that you need to wear, you know, large crowds, other things. But here at work, completely support, as a Board of Supervisor, and I know the rest of the board would, your personal decision on what's going to keep you safe. We'll continue to support you in that. And, you know, it's going to be a real challenge, you know, with the, people are going to have a, you know, one thought or another. But completely support our employees wearing the mask as long as we need. We need to get through another flu season, which I think will come this fall. And understanding that by the end of the year, really where we are. So completely support that and appreciate the questions today. And understand, you know, the angst about it. So we'll continue to work through that and be as supportive as possible. Also, I want to mention something you talked about, our businesses. I heard you mention it a couple times, Chair Sabatier, that please, if you're a customer, businesses, or other things that are making... or businesses or other things that are making their decisions, please understand, everybody is addressing this thing with all the confusion, you know, in their own way. Please support local businesses that make the decision to mask or not to mask. You know, just continue to do that and be sympathetic for others and understand and have compassion. I think that's real important. Just as we started this, we know it was a real challenge. But now that we're coming out of it, you know, be, just be as compassionate as possible as we do this. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Any further comments, or are we ready for action?
I want to make sure what the motion's going to be here. So the motion will be to implement any CDC or CDBPH.
Cal-OSHA.
Or, yeah, so, sorry, Cal-OSHA changes on Thursday, that we could implement them and then ratify it on Tuesday, any of the changes that happened from Cal-OSHA on Thursday. That's a long motion, but is that okay?
Yeah, that, that works. That's perfect.
So we have a motion from Supervisor Simon and a second from Supervisor Crandall. Johanna, if you can please have a roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Piska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and looking forward to what happens on Thursday. We're going to have a 30-second pause, as it is 9:44 and 50 seconds. In order to start our item at 9:45 a.m., I'll start reading it. 9:45 a.m., presentation of certificates to the participants of the CSAC William Bill Shiyet Institute for Excellence in County Government. And I believe we have CSAC Graham, I believe his last name is Klaus.
We have our executive, CSAC Executive Director, Graham Nos with us. And we also have Chastity Benson, who is the Director of the CSAC Foundation. Her title is, I might not have gotten that perfectly right, but it's in the ballpark, isn't it, Chastity?
You're getting a nod.
So if it's 9:45, we can start, Mr. Chair?
Yes, it is 9:45. Let's go ahead and get started. And CAO Hutchinson, I'll let you get started with it.
So thank you. We're really excited to be here today for this first opportunity to present certificates to Lake County staff who participated in the CSAC Leadership Program that we co-hosted this past year with Mendocino County. This was an idea of myself and my counterpart in Mendocino County a couple of years ago. We thought, why not ask if this can be done regionally? And we reached out to Chastity, and it was just happening like that. So it's brought a wonderful opportunity to our two counties, so staff could attend without travel. However, the pandemic certainly impacted all of it. We had every intention for the program to be in person and for, for our employees to also benefit from the networking you do when you meet with other people who do the same things you do. Unfortunately, the pandemic moved it into an online program, but we still had a lot of great participation and a number of people that are graduating per se today. And so at this point, I'd like to introduce Graham and Chastity. Thank you for joining us.
Great. Thank you, Carol. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and to join your board. I am Graham Kinnous. I'm the Executive Director of the California State Association of Counties, or CSAC. And our primary role is to advocate on behalf of all of you and the rest of your colleagues across the state, at the state and federal levels, to ensure that you have the resources, the authority, and the flexibility to do things that make sense in your community. And that certainly has not been tested anywhere near to the degree that it has been over the course of the past 15 months with the pandemic and the complexities around that, including that which you were just speaking of with the upcoming Cal-OSHA-related actions, or reactions, or third actions, or whatever it might be by the time we get to Thursday. And so right now, we're spending a lot of our time focusing on what are our organizational top three priorities. One of them is broadband, which I know is a big issue in Lake County. In fact, we have a press conference that's happening in just a couple of hours to try to push the legislature to adopt a proposal, a $7 billion proposal, to make that happen now. And then we're working on resiliency, both for drought and wildfires. And I'm not sure there's a county that's been more severely impacted than yours related to those issues, and then homelessness. And so that's what we're spending a lot of our time doing. But I'm also thrilled to be here today, representing the William Bill Shiyet Institute for Excellence in County Government, which is run out of our California Counties Foundation, and is the model educational institute for county leaders across the country. We've been so thrilled to get out of Sacramento and to come closer to your community, so that these partnerships, like what you have with Mendocino for the, for this campus, can come into place and be helpful for your, the building of your existing staff and developing leaders for the future. This happened, or began, about five years ago, as we started to get out of Sacramento and move to the northern part of the state. As Carol said, and she's absolutely right, her and her colleague Carmel Angelo in Mendocino, were the driving forces of us partnering on the Mendocino Lake Campus. And we've been very, very thrilled to do it. Carol's also right, that Chastity Benson, who serves as our Director of Operations and Educational Programs, is a gem and a mighty force that made it happen. And she made it happen quickly in a way that was meaningful, that's been meaningful, I think, for those that have been taking courses. So huge thanks to you, Carol, for your leadership, to your board, for your leadership over the course of the past couple of years, related to the campus and related to all things around county government. It's been quite a challenge. And to see those pursuing a credential, stick with it, and add more to their plate at the same time that they're managing through the pandemic over the course of the past year is remarkable. It's certainly a testament to the commitment to themselves, investing in themselves, to deliver higher, more quality services in your community, and to give back to your county. And so huge congratulations to all the credential awardees today. And at this point, I want to turn it over to Chastity, who's the real superstar on our team to make this happen, and she'll make a few comments.
Thank you, Graham, and thank you, Carol. It was, been a wonderful partnership. I remember when we met to talk about the institute and to see it come in fruition in Mendocino County and Lake was, was quite a joy for me. I really just want to say thank you to all the graduates for your patience through all the change that we've gone through with the institute over the last year. As Carol noted, we started off in person and we finished online, but I, hopefully you still had a great experience and you still had an opportunity to network with your colleagues and with your colleagues in Mendocino County as well. Your commitment to serve Lake County is commendable. Not only does your cohort nearly quadruple the number of credential holders in Lake County, which also includes former Supervisor Jim Still and current County Supervisor Eddie Crandall, who just received his credential a few months ago. I want to let you know that your cohort graduated with an impressive 70% completion rate, which is remarkable even without a pandemic. I think it's probably the highest completion rate. So kudos to you and thanks again for your support. So again, I just want to congratulate you on your exceptional achievement and joining our distinguished group of credential holders throughout the state of California. Now we would like to share a brief video highlighting your achievement.
Whoops. Hang on a second, my sound may be.
When you share screen, there is a checkbox to enable audio, and you need to enable that checkbox when you start the share screen.
Okay, so we had the audio turned down because of the hybrid model, so let's go back. So I have my audio enabled, Jake. But it's not coming up.
You have to enable it for the share, though. Did you check that box?
Okay, just sorry about this. Give me a second.
Seems you might have to exit your share screen and maybe start again.
Yeah, I'm working on that.
And that's where the option might be.
So Jake, I need to go into settings?
When you click on share screen?
Yes.
At the bottom.
Oh, gotcha. I see it, Jake. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, perfect.
Thank you, Jake.
Sorry about that, everyone. So now let me restart it.
Hi, everyone. I'm Graham Kinnous, Executive Director of the California State Association of Counties. I'm pleased to recognize that individuals have earned their county executive credential in 2020. The CSAC Institute has been educating county leaders for 13 years, and it's never been stronger. The Institute remains the national model for policy and leadership development of county leaders. You are essential to our ongoing success, and we appreciate your patience, flexibility, and support over the last 10 months as we navigated through COVID-19 and moved all of our classes online. Since its inception, the Institute has had more than 950 leaders who have earned their credential and thousands more who have attended classes. Congratulations on joining this distinguished group of county leaders. On behalf of CSAC and the California Counties Foundation, we thank you for your commitment to public service and your investment in yourself as a leader.
Hello, I'm Carol Hutchison, County Administrative Officer here in Lake County. On behalf of Lake County, I would like to congratulate you on earning your CSAC Institute credential. You've joined literally hundreds of other county leaders as being a credential holder. This past year has truly been a challenge, since many of our lives have been impacted by COVID-19. So I would like to thank you for your hard work and your dedication to completing the credential program. We truly appreciate your commitment to public services and to the residents of Lake County.
So, Mr. Chair, if you and I could give out the certificates, many of our recipients are here in person today?
Absolutely. First, I like my other list better. I'll be back. The list that I had only had names. I want to make sure and describe the positions and departments that they work for as well. First is Alicia Ayala, who is our Fiscal Coordinator of Deputy of Department of Public Works. Congratulations and thank you. And at the end, all of you who are here in the room, I want you to all come up so we can take a picture together. Next is Luke Bingham, Sheriff Lieutenant, Sheriff Department, a lieutenant, not with us today. Next is Stephen Carter of the Administration Office, Deputy CAO. Next, Marina Deligianis from Water Resources, Deputy Director. Next, Richard Ford of the Assessor Recorder's Office, our elected assessor. Hopefully he's in the Zoom room. I can't see it. There he is. Thank you. Next is Marcy Harrison from the Auditor Controller's Office, Chief Deputy Auditor. Next is Scott Harder from Special Districts. He is our Administrator. I don't know if he's in the Zoom room. I do see Jesse here with us. Next, Landai Janakis from the Assessor Recorder's Office, Chief Deputy Assessor Recorder. We'll let Rich make sure she's on. Next is Ayesha Miller from Health Services, Program Manager. Next is Corey Pollitt from the Sheriff Department, Lieutenant. There he is. And I apologize if the last name was not exactly pronounced correctly. Next is Matthew Rothstein, Administration Deputy CAO. Yes, thank you, Matthew, for controlling us on Zoom. Next is Jesse Salmeron from Special Districts, Deputy Administrator Fiscal. Next is Richard Ward from the Sheriff Department, Lieutenant. Don't know if he's in the Zoom room. Next is, our last one, is Gavin Wells from the Sheriff Department, also Lieutenant. And so there's something that I truly believe in, is that we're continuously students, and we're always learning. And the CSAC Institute really afforded our staff to be able to continue their education and become better servants to the community of Lake. And we need to continue these things, and I know that there's conversations to continue this. I do want to thank Graham and Chastity. I met you about two and a half years ago. Actually, I mostly met Bill Shiyet there, who was the head of the new Supervisor Institute. I learned so much to get my feet on the ground and get me started. You guys have been supportive of everything that I've been trying to do and work on here. The opportunities you provide are immense, and I can't thank you enough for giving our staff the opportunity to advance their skill sets so that they can provide those skills back to our community. So thank you so much. Carol, anything?
Yeah, I just want to absolutely confirm that, that, great news, the program is absolutely starting up again in the fall. And this time, we have every commitment to do it in person to the greatest extent possible. So we're excited to have our next round of employees sign up for this program. The Human Resources Department will coordinate the enrollments this time, and so notice will be going out. Chastity, I'm looking at you. Do we have the date of the first class at this point?
I believe it's the, it's either the first or second Thursday in September. And it'll be a hybrid model, couple of months online, and then we'll go full, full force in person by January.
Great. So, thank you.
And then to all the employees who received an award today, thank you so much for voluntarily choosing to be a part of the institute. We do have some frames for you here. Please make sure to come down to the courthouse to pick them up. And congratulations to all. Thank you so much for making the time to do this. Yeah, if we can get all the recipients that are in the room, if we can come and take a picture, please. No, I'm good. I didn't, they, they are the highlights of. No, I'm good. I didn't, I, they, they are the highlights of today, not me.
Thanks to Graham, again, Graham and Chastity for joining us. Thanks for the program.
Appreciate it. Look forward to being there in person next time.
Indeed, indeed. All right. Thank you. Just to, not to remind, that's the wrong word, that's patronizing. But one of our goals is staff development. This is exactly what staff development is all about, and glad that we're continuing that. So thank you for supporting this as a board, and thank you, Carol, for bringing this and organizing it with CSAC. I think that we all benefit from that. All right, moving on. We're actually almost spot on time today.
Is there any public comment on this?
Oh, I'm still sorry, yes.
In case somebody wants to say something, I just wanted to bring that up.
Anybody wish to make a comment before we open it up to the public? Okay, let's open it up to the public. Oh, Supervisor Simon?
No, just, you know, in coordination, as you were saying, with the education and development of our workforce, you know, they are the ones that do all that work. So I just want to thank the graduates today and, you know, thank Carol and everything bringing this forward. And once again, during a pandemic, these folks went through the process, got it done. You know, that just takes that little more perseverance and just shows how dedicated our employees are to serving our constituents, and, you know, I think that's a great achievement. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Let's open it up to the public. Any public comments? If anybody who received an award also wishes to speak, please do so. They are speechless. All right, let's go ahead and bring it back. Again, thank you and congratulations to all of our staff who went through it. And Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, I guess I'll go ahead and say something. I received my credential in April, and I seen a lot of our employees there, and it was really, it was really a blessing to see familiar faces, first and foremost, but it was also great to see them interact. And they put you in breakout rooms because this is a situation where we're all doing it on Zoom. And so I know that there was a lot of networking, a lot of learning, and you get a better grasp for your job, not just because you're already doing it with empirical knowledge, but you have people giving you this, this other resource that you can always refer back to as well. And this institute is very helpful, and I know that when we went to our new Supervisor Institute, it was helpful. But when you go into depth, it really plays a good role as well for your development, so... And the one thing I always, I upset Jim Steele about is he says, "You didn't have to travel nowhere," because I guess when he did, he had to travel everywhere, so I took advantage of the pandemic, I guess. So, yeah, it's a good thing, and I'm glad to see all the folks do that, and I'm looking forward to seeing more graduate from these credential programs, so...
All right, and definitely congratulations to you as well for making that happen so quickly. And that seems to be it, and there's no action on this item as it was a presentation and a good one at that. So let's go ahead and move on. If there's no further comment here from the board to our 10:00 AM item, Public Hearing, Consideration of a Resolution Amending the Master Fee Schedule for Departmental Services rendered by the County, CAO Hutchinson.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. Sorry about that. Stephen Carter is going to present this. As you recall, we just did the Master Fee Ordinance, the annual update, not long ago, and a couple departments had additional submittals, and so that's what we have before you today. Go ahead, Stephen.
Good morning, Board. Long time no see. So, this update for the master fee is, it is not a correction. What it is, is two departments have adjustments that didn't make the deadline for the previous adjustment, but they will still become effective July 1st, like the other changes in fees. So this would also be done by, via resolution. So the first one up is Public Services, where the Franchise Holler Fee is being updated via CPI. So it's going from 5305 to 5390, and that's, is the request. And then the next department is Water Resources, and they're requesting most of their fees to be updated via CPI as well. So, and then there's two new fees added to here, but they were always collected by CDD already as part of the permits. It's just, we've been recommending that the departments that charge through CDD to have it under their section as well, so it's known. So that's the two extra CDD permit review for non-cannabis and cannabis permits on there that show as brand new, but they're actually not a new fee. It's just now under Water Resources section as well. And that is about all I have for this update.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions from the board on this? Seems pretty straightforward with only a CPI update more than anything, than anything else, so that keeps it simple for us. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none from the board and seeing none from the Zoom room, let's go ahead and bring it back and offer the resolution.
Mr. Chair, offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatien?
Aye.
Thank you.
And motion passes, or resolution passes. We're going to go ahead and go back to our item 5.14, Approved Letter of Support for the Request for Grant Extension for Agreement Number 4600012946, Middle Creek Flood Damage Reduction and Ecosystem Restoration Project, and authorize the Chair to sign. So if the board doesn't mind, I am going to quickly read this letter as it was only made public as of late afternoon, mid-afternoon yesterday. And so I just want to make sure that it's, in case people have not had the time, in case we have not had the time to review it, just to read it real fast. And I'm going to go ahead and just get started. Subject: Letter of Support for the Lake County Watershed Protection District Request for Extension for Agreement Number 4600012946, Middle Creek Flood Damage Reduction and Ecosystem Restoration Project. Dear Ms. Nodgrass, On behalf of the Lake County Board of Supervisors, please allow this letter to serve as a letter of support for the Lake County Watershed Protection District's Request for Extension for California Department of Water Resources, Agreement Number 4600012946, for the Middle Creek Flood Damage Reduction and Ecosystem Restoration Project. As identified on page two of the agreement, the current end date of work to be completed by is March 31st, 2022, and current end date of funds requested by is December 31st, 2022. The district is requesting a two-year timeline grant extension of both agreement deadlines. The principal reason for the district's request for extension is a result of the already encountered and the likely encounter of anticipated discrepancies due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Since its inception, the pandemic has impacted not only the communication chain and transport of essential documents in an expedited manner between the parcel owners, title company, county, and DWR, but also the overall acquisition process, including influences to the real estate availability and process throughout the county. These discrepancies have had direct and detrimental impacts on the forward progress of Task One, Administration; Task Two, Acquisition Costs; and Task Three, Relocation, Demolition, and Cleanup of Agreement as outlined in Exhibit C of Agreement Number 460012946. The delays that the district has encountered to date have had, have had caused unanticipated turbulence of the movements towards the outlined March and December 2022 deadlines. If DWR were to deem timeline adjustments appropriate to extend the current deadlines by two years, the Board of Supervisors would continue to provide support and pressure on the district of the timely completion of the project by means of still aiming for the current project timeline as outlined in Exhibit E of Agreement Number 4600012946. The County of Lake Board of Supervisors would like to welcome the opportunity to discuss this letter of support in more detail or provide you and your team any additional information. If you find yourself with any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me via email or via phone. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter respectfully. And I just want to provide an update that we do have both our Senator and our Assemblywoman that are supporting us in having discussions with DWR and seeing how we can expedite this process. The idea, again, behind the extension is not to, oh, thank goodness, we have two more years. The idea is to still work diligently on trying our best to get this accomplished as soon as possible. The two-years extension would allow us to ensure that we're going to be successful, but we just feel that the March 31st, 2022 deadline was a little too close for comfort without starting the requests now. We do have Marina Deligianis on here. I believe we also have Director DeLeon. I do see him. If any one of you have a comment on this before we open it up for the supervisors to comment, please do so.
Yes, thank you, Chair Sabatien, for reading this letter, and thank you to the board for taking this letter on. I do apologize for getting it to you in a delayed manner, but as Supervisor Sabatien said, we did have a very productive conversation with our state representatives, which again makes us hopeful in crossing our fingers of being granted this extension of two years. And outlined in this letter, and I also have the letter that the district is planning on sending to the state, we will make that available on our Water Resources website. And if any folks would like to see that letter, once we send that out to the state, I'm more than happy to send that to you electronically. Or if you want to come in on the Water Resources, I can share that letter with you. My email is marina, M-A-R-I-N-A, dot deligianis, D-E-L-I-G-I-A-N-N-I-S, at lakecountyca.gov. I'll give you questions, but yes, this letter, we are requesting a two-year grant extension deadline of our deadline of March 31st, 2022, and then also December 31st, 2022, hopefully gaining an extension of 2024 for that in hopes of still successfully acquiring the parcels from the willing sellers before that 2024 deadline, if, if granted. So still moving in a very quick and efficient manner, but also understanding that COVID has caused some delays in terms of our progress toward the successful completion, again, as outlined in this letter. So before I ramble too much, I will pass it over to Director Scott DeLeon if he has any additional input on the letter that is brought to the board today. Thank you.
Thank you, Marina. I actually don't have anything else other than to say thank you to the board for your continued support, and we are making progress, and this would definitely take the pressure off. And so hopefully, hopefully we've answered all of your questions. Thank you.
So I will request an amendment to the letter. At the end, it says, "Please do not hesitate to contact me via email." I don't mind receiving it, but I think it should be, maybe contact me or my team, something along those lines, and then add the contacts below. And if we can go ahead and list a few contacts, which I think it would be appropriate to have Director DeLeon, Deputy Director Marina Deligianis, and then myself. And also, I would like to add Supervisor Crandall, who is on the team and the Chair of the Committee for the Middle Creek Restoration Project. Just because I know there's times in the near future where I plan to be away for a little moment, and I don't want to miss or delay any conveyance of any messages we may receive from DWR. And so if we can add that, and also at the bottom, if we could change that to District Two instead of District Three under my signature name, and that would be the only changes that I'm looking for. Any other comment from the board on this letter or the changes being offered? Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, it's really, it's really important that we get the, we get this extension. Hopefully they deem it. It was a good meeting with our state representatives. They were really excited in fact that we came 10 months ahead of time to prepare for this, knowing that we've had these challenges. And just another addition to that is we're meeting with different groups that have new governments, new elected officials that we have to kind of get on the same page with as well. So those are some other moving parts that, that come along with this project, and so just wanted to highlight those things. And thank you, the hard, to the hard work for the staff for doing what they're doing on this.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any further comments? Supervisor Simon?
The only question I'd have is, obviously, the lake affects all of us, unincorporated, our cities. Are, is, are you guys going to look to see if we can get a letter of support for both the City of Clear Lake, City of Lakeport, any other, you know, the tribal governments? Everybody who's working on the Blue River, I, I just think it's so important having those support letters. Obviously, ours being, you know, the main one, but just a campaign with support letters. Just wondering if that was discussed in, in the group.
To be honest, we have not had that level of discussion. Yes, we've looked at those that are directly impacted, such as on the North Shore area. But you're right, that it absolutely will have an impact on the lake. That is the anticipated reason why we're even doing this project in the first place, is to enhance the water quality, deal, help deal with the algae blooms and so on. But I would say that that should be something we should look for, because I, thank you for bringing it up. I think it's, it would be useful to have more letters of support than just a single letter coming from us.
Yes, I think we'll work on, I know for sure, one Wednesday.
Yeah, we are working on some stuff from the North Shore, but I don't disagree that we should be looking at anyone that will be impacted by the changes in the lake, and that's, that's a lot more than just that.
Okay, I just wanted to put it out.
Thank you for reminding us on that. We've just been so hard-charged on getting this done, to get ours done first, and so, but I think we can, we have enough time to get some other support.
Yeah.
And we'll work on the governments and the municipalities as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Mo.
Yeah. Any further comments? All right, let's open it up for the public. Any comments from the public on this letter of support to Department of Water Resources at the state level? Seeing none in the Zoom room and seeing none in the boardroom, let's go ahead and bring it back for action, and if you agree with the changes, if you can add those to the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the letter of support for the request for the grant extension for Agreement Number 4600012946, Middle Creek Flood Damage Reduction and Ecosystem Restoration Project, and authorize Chair to sign with amendments.
Second?
I have a motion from Supervisor Crandall, a second from Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatien?
Aye.
Thank you.
And just to apologize, Johanna, if the first word is Supervisor. So I just, real quick, just to let you know, this is not the only plan. We're looking at multiple types of plans in order to ensure that Middle Creek Project does complete successfully. We have not shared with you all of our plans yet, because some of them are easier to share with today than they are later on, but we may be coming back with some other options that we're kind of playing around with. What we need first is a little bit more confirmation from the Department of Water Resources to see if we can take alternative routes to making this happen. So this is not the last that you'll be hearing about this project. We need to make sure to stay on top of it, and we don't want to let time slip through our fingers before we know what actions we need to take to make sure we get the, the success we're looking for. So thank you very much to Water Resources, and that will end our item, and that will also end our agenda other than calendars. So let's go ahead and start with calendars, and we'll start backwards with Supervisor Pyska.
Thank you. So just a little bit to report out this week. Monday, we had our kickoff with our special advisor, David Bosch, who met with us and staff yesterday morning and has officially begun. So we're excited about that. Supervisor Simon and I were there to welcome him and get that process rolling. So we will be giving updates as we go through the summer on how this transition's unrolling. I would also just like to make an announcement that it is officially fire season. We've had several fires this week, and it's time for us to get back in the mindset of being vigilant and being prepared at all times. I know it's difficult for all of us. We have collective community wildfire trauma. And it's not only important for us to take care of our homes and plan for, plan for fires, but we also have to do some, take care of some mental hygiene, be aware of our triggers, and look out for other people that may be in distress. I know when we had two fires on Saturday in the Cobb area, everybody was pretty triggered. PTSD is chronic for all of us that live in Lake County. So it's just a time to be compassionate to each other, to look out for people that may need resources, and just be prepared and be vigilant. So now for my calendar. Tomorrow, with Supervisor Scott, I'm going to be speaking at the Opioid Summit. I'm going to try and check in with the Tobacco Town Hall that Senator McGuire, I think, is hosting. I have my cavern radio check-in, and now it's even more important than ever to have communication with your friends and neighbors about if and when a fire may occur. On Thursday, there's the Etheric Network Meeting, talking a... On Thursday, there's the Etheric Network meeting, talking about, is it broadband?
Yeah.
I'm gonna be, yes, um assisting with interviews with South Lake Fire. I have my CAC meeting in the evening. On Friday, Workforce Alliance Governing Board meeting, and then Regional Labor Strategies following that. On Monday, I have my usual meeting with our CAO. We have a risk reduction meeting in the afternoon, and then Tuesday back here.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Scott?
This evening, we will be having our first Community Vision Forum Planning um meeting tonight at six o'clock via Zoom. So if you're interested in um understanding what, what the committee's doing and how we're going to be moving forward, please join us tonight at six o'clock at Zoom. Tomorrow, I'm speaking at the Opioid Summit in the morning, and then also have a um nine o'clock Blue Zones Planning Meeting at nine. Um I'll be taking a couple days off to spend with family. On Monday, um I have a pit count meeting at one o'clock. Pit count's in January, but it's time now to start planning for that, and then just getting ready for Tuesday's meeting.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, so I'll um report on a meeting I went to last week with the South Deal. Um I attended that meeting on Thursday with Supervisor Simon, and uh I'll highlight uh what I'm pretty interested in, and that's the Clean California Bill that's coming out. Should be today, I think, that they're doing some legislation on it, voting on it, something like that. But I know one thing that I am excited about is that it could help with some uh some funding to, not only for art initiatives and things like that, but also for cleaning up garbage and 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 all of that blight that comes along with the highways as well. So um I'm excited about that, and I'll let Supervisor Simon go into detail on the other stuff, but I just wanted to highlight that. Um um so on my calendar, I have, tonight, we have the visioning uh planning uh meeting for um the group we put together for Equity, Inclusion, and Diversion. But of course, we're we're um conducting the planning and visioning initially. Tomorrow, I will be um traveling to Mono County for RCRC. It's the first time we're meeting in like, I think, two years. So, but on my way, of course, I have the, before I leave or while on my way, I'll be tuning into the NSBA meeting. Um and then at two, I'll be doing a Zoom meeting with some of the Middle Creek Restoration folks. We'll be meeting with the Robinson Rancheria Tribal Council via Zoom as well. Um and so then uh in the evening, I'm also doing um the Tobacco Town Hall. I think McGuire is going to be in that one, too. I'll be a part of that as well. Um and uh the the Worth Meeting will still be continuing on at Upper Lake um at five thirty in Upper Lake. So um they'll be continuing that on, and uh they'll be able to attend with that. I think they have some folks coming. I think the Sheriff will be there. Um and then uh Thursday, I'll be conducting the RCRC meeting that we'll have uh in Mammoth Lakes. I think it is Mammoth something, Mammoth Falls. That's what it's called, yeah. Um Friday, uh Golden State Finance is uh is my first meeting. And of course, I think simultaneously, we have the the class from CSAC for Equity, uh Inclusion, and Diversion as well. So I think I'll be doubling up on that as well. In the evening, I will not be able to make it back to to the Laugh Meeting, but it'll still be uh taking place at the Lucerne Castle, um and it'll be in person. Um I don't, I don't think there'll be Zoom capabilities for whatever reason, but if they can, if they can line that up, it'll work out. Um and then uh Monday, I'll be back here uh with the me, my meeting with Carol, and uh back here Tuesday for for Supervisor meeting.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, so uh finishing up the board meeting today, um tomorrow have uh, looks like there's an EMCC meeting at from ten to eleven. Um that's what I have on the calendar for uh tomorrow also. Um Thursday have uh updated, looks like there's a Mental Health uh Board uh meeting Thursday afternoon. And then Friday have uh Workforce Alliance in in the morning, then the Regional Labor Strategies, also part of Workforce Alliance. And then later on that afternoon, our first meeting of the Roadmap Task Force, uh which I'm excited to have uh coming forward. On Saturday, we'll be participating in Middletown Days. Uh Middletown Days is back, so we'll be having our parade and our barbecue, so please come out and enjoy that down in Middletown. That'll be a great event, something we didn't get to last year, but we did Lower Lake Days last month, and now Middletown Day is rolling out, and I know that Lakeport did there, so a little bit of normal coming back. And then obviously, Sunday is Father's Day. We'll be enjoying that. Uh Monday, have the Risk Reduction Authority, also meeting with Carol in the morning back here on Tuesday. I would like to report on a few things, though. Um as uh EJ talked about, we had the South Deal Committee uh meeting. Uh it was very informative. I'm excited, too, to see about the clean grants that are coming out under the budget. Looks like that's gonna happen. Uh so we'll be communicating those, and hopefully, as we talked last week, getting our nonprofits and others that may benefit from those monies coming down to get in communication and and make sure they know what's out there. Uh the other thing, too, I I would just like to have, um just say congratulations. I know we still have one more school that needs to graduate, but to all the graduates in Lake County, doesn't matter at what level or whatever, continuing that education, we, you know, uh talked about that today here with our employees, but um just, just want to say congratulations to all the graduates, the families, and all the hard work that they do. We all know and have been through that and understand how important that is. And I also want to talk about our our other schools, whether it's uh Locanoma, some of the alternative schools that we have, uh and other things. Uh sometimes uh, you know, tho- those, those folks are, you know, forgotten, are not given the same praise, and I just want to make sure that they get that, you know. Ultimately, um everyone has challenges in life, but those young folks that go through and get those diplomas, get those graduate things done and completed, um you know, i- it's a challenge for them sometimes. So I just think that they need to be held up high uh because you never know where they're gonna end up, you know, starting out young. You have all those things, but I just uh can't say enough to our alternative high schools, GD programs, everything that are done, how important that is in your life. And you may not understand that right now, but in long-term success, um you know, it's just, it's unbelievable. So I just, I just wanted to say that and have that opportunity uh to say that to all the graduates. Um the other thing uh that uh I'd like to talk about, too, at the South Deal Committee, uh there was a uh project down in South County uh that I'm excited about that's coming. I worked with uh CHP and other folks. It's called the um, oh, now I'm messing up. It's right at the, at the Twin Lakes uh entrance there. Looks like that safety project is going to be moved up. I don't have a timeframe on that. I'll report that down. There are some other projects. We'll report out as they happen, but it was great to hear uh that that project was going to be escalated and uh some turn lanes and other stuff would be put in there for a safety project. So excited to hear about that. Um also, you know, just continue to update you as we have the meetings, and uh the Trailside Project uh down in Middletown, uh you know, should be going out to bid this fall. Uh so that project will be done, and that's a trail that goes from um Central Park all the way out to uh the Middletown Rancheria. It is a community uh project that was done by math, and it's gonna be a great walking trail, horse trail, and everything for everybody down there. So uh just a good thing to encourage outdoor activity, uh but also to just really highlight what we do. We're still, you know, people riding horses back and forth to town, which is what you love about Lake County, the uniqueness, and it'll just enhance that um as folks are coming and visiting our beautiful town to see who we are and our culture that is here. So uh excited about that. So with that, I think that's it. Thank you.
I I want to thank you for um your comments about graduation. I meant to say something last week, so thank you so much for saying it. Uh because I think uh when we say something, we kind of say it from all of us as a board, and I'm sure that we all feel the same way. Uh so thank you for those comments. I I think uh I I think it's important for that to be heard, so thank you. Um I also want to share appreciation for what has started. There are certain things that have begun because of COVID, and there are certain things I don't want to see going away, even though COVID might be going away. Uh and what has been happening in the city of Clear Lake and in Lower Lake with the banners of all graduates, no matter what school you go to, Carley's up there as the alternative school, KEC, and Lower Lake High School, uh to celebrate uh the moving forward of those students, getting their diploma and and becoming adults and joining the rest of the community as participants, as adults. And I I I really appreciate those types of changes, uh and I don't want to see those things going away, and I do not believe it will because I think everyone appreciates it. Um so later today, we have Agenda Review. Uh definitely a a short meeting for us today in comparison to last week's meeting, so it's nice to have that change. Uh tomorrow, um I will be joining the Blue Zone Planning Meeting, just to check in and see how things are going. Uh Blue Zone Program is a um uh a group of uh agencies that are coming together to try to figure out what programs we need to enhance to help us have healthier lifestyles. Uh Blue Zones are typically where people age to an average of about a hundred. Uh what are the customs and cultural things that these individuals do that provide them with a long-lasting life uh and quality life? And uh so we're looking at um what can be changed, and I know that Adventist Health is very um prominent in that program, uh as are others, and so we're looking to see what uh can be done. So I'm just gonna join in the conversation and and see what we can support. Uh also later on that day, meeting with the CEO of Adventist Health. Um as we keep going later, two o'clock, Supervisor Crandall already mentioned it, meeting with Robinson Rancheria, uh mainly in discussion of the Middle Creek Restoration Project uh and uh obtaining support as we were just discussing. Uh depending on how long that meeting is, I will be joining the Marketing Committee over in the city of Clear Lake. And if you have the chance and you're able to go to Austin Park in the city of Clear Lake, the first of four fish forms have been installed. Uh this one is made of metal. It is done by Diego Harris. It is absolutely gorgeous. Um this was something that I worked with the Rural Arts Initiative uh to bring to Lake County. My hope is that what we show off in the city of Clear Lake will be something that is embraced by the rest of Lake County. Uh when I go around Sonoma County, Napa County, I see cows, I see uh roosters. They're all pretty much the same form, but with different coloration and designs. And when I was traveling through Wyoming, I saw buffaloes everywhere with the same exact form, but again, different designs on those forms. I didn't see anything like that for Lake County. What are we known for? We're known for our fish. Uh we are the number one bass fishing lake, at least in the West, possibly even in the nation. Um and I didn't really see bass being uh highlighted in 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 such a way. And so this is the beginning of what I hope will continue uh around the lake. And so far, just the one is is beautiful, and the other three uh are made of wood. Uh and I know I've said it before, but it's repurposed trees that were fallen from the valley fire uh that have been uh repurposed for art, and I hope that we can continue um that trend and put more around the lake as I think it's gonna be beautiful. Uh on the seventeenth, I'll be joining in on the Lake County Behavioral Health Services, MHSA. Um in case that there's um more than two of us there, I will not be speaking, and I will be turning off my camera because I know that Ms. Grant tells us even um eyebrows being raised says something. So um I will just be listening in and checking in. That way, if there's more of us there, we can all do that. Uh later on, uh meeting with uh Etheric Network. Uh broadband is very important. Uh we just discussed that there's a bill right now that CSAC is supporting uh that we need to try and get the uh approval from the governor. Uh I think it's all gonna happen. I think broadband is the number one issue that has come out of COVID-19, and I think that we're all gonna be able to access some great pots of money to be able to move our broadband forward and and change the uh the the status that we've had here as a rural community, and and we need to. Uh later on, is a CSAC call, just for a quick update on COVID. Uh I'm sure that those calls will eventually go away as there's not much more to inform on, especially with what's happening right now. Uh maybe we'll know by then uh at that point in time of the phone call what Cal OSHA has done. We'll, we'll see. Um and then joining the Clear Lake City Council Meeting to make sure and keep up to date with what's going on there in the city. Uh on the eighteenth, I am going to uh meet with our Sheriff and have a a discussion on multiple topics. Later on, meeting with the Roadmap Task Force, which I'm excited to sit down and get started. Um then Monday, coming back, preparing for the meeting, meeting with our CAO, doing another CSAC call, and then having a meeting on the twenty-second, and that's it for me.
Mr. Chair, one last thing. I apologize I missed. I I just want to uh just kind of a public announcement, uh Lake County Risk Reduction, Cal Fire, other folks. It it's getting dry out there, obviously, so uh please, I ask you to remember uh if you're cutting any grass or any do anything like that, please have a water source uh by you when you're doing your project. Also, uh make sure it's done early in the morning, if you're gonna do that. I know as we transition through the dryness this year, you know, the later we get into June here, really would like people to transition to the string, weed eaters, other opportunities, so there aren't sparks created or other things, but also just be diligent, whether you're cutting grass, welding outside, anything like that. Have a water source of some point by you. Uh we appreciate everybody being diligent, but accidents can happen. Um so I just, I want that announcement again. I know it's been said. We did it when we did the proclamation, but please be diligent uh this year uh more than ever. We should always be doing that, but um please, uh just wanted to get that on uh an announcement, and we'll continue to do that, try and do that every week. We'll make that announcement with the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority also on Monday. Uh just wanted to get that out there in our communities, please, um early morning uh for cutting any grass, and please start to transition to string, uh not, you know, nothing with a metal blade and other stuff, so that's it.
I appreciate that. That's important. Did I hear a button for a comment?
Yes, when you were reporting on your calendars, I detected uh something about the Roadmap Task Force meeting, which is this Friday at uh one thirty. Um it looks like I made an error when I had the invitation sent out. Your board-appointed members are the Chair and Supervisor Pyska. I apologize, Supervisor Simon. Um there was an error that we sent that invite to you, so um my apologies.
Okay. Got removed.
You're off.
You've got the Economic Development Task Force.
All right, excellent.
So sorry.
So that's okay.
And um I will also add one thing since uh we're adding stuff. Uh the work that was done by BLM and Cal Fire on the back, on the east side of the city of Clear Lake, between the uh scar of the Rocky Fire and the city, uh a four-hundred-foot um vegetation fire break has been finished. There is still some brush that needs to be um moved off to the side and possibly burned sometime next year when burning uh permits are allowed again. Uh but they've done a really good job. I do know that there was supposed to be some work around Mount Canacti, but I believe their equipment broke, so I'm not sure that they were able to do any of that work around Mount Canacti. Uh but I plan to continue to work with BLM and Cal Fire and the team that helped put this together um because it's meant to be a a part of a larger project where eventually the idea was to do a twenty-two-hundred-acre controlled burn between uh Landrum Ranch all the way through to almost Lower Lake area uh in order to protect the city uh from any fires coming from the BLM land and the Cache Creek Wilderness or the National Monument. Uh I I will add Supervisor Pyska to my conversation so that you can be there to apply pressure and have conversations to getting those uh projects done and completed around Mount Canacti, because I think it's important that we get those projects done. Um because we barely saved this one uh east of the city of Clear Lake, and and if it wasn't for the um advocacy and the greasing of the wheels that we were able to do uh and the connections that we have within the community, it may never have happened. So I I will make sure to add you to the conversation so that we can uh work together on those things. And that is it for me, and that is it for our open session. And we do not have any closed sessions today, so everyone have a wonderful rest of your morning, and see you next week.